No one.
I can recognize that whistle.
How you doing?
I'm doing all right, how about you?
Making it through, I think.
Hello.
Hello.
If I called the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors a meeting to order, we welcome everyone that's in attendance. And tonight, we're gonna have a whole lot of interesting data, I'm sure, for people to see. So, in saying that, first gonna have our pledge of allegiance immediately following by our invocation by Mr. Hinkle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we recognize you as sovereign over all. We recognize that you appoint government and you appoint the servants. We ask that we be blessed with your guidance tonight to make the correct decisions for the citizens of Appomattox County and the departments involved. Pray for safety of all our workers, especially our Sheriff's Department as they're out there on the front line, and EMS as well. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Next is setting up the agenda. Anyone have any items that like to add to the agenda?
Mr. Carter, I would like to add one item to the agenda. If you notice, item number 14 is transferring money from the asset forfeiture fund to the general fund and to pay for a car. And we need to pay the invoice on the car. So I need to add that as a payment, and it's in the amount of $37,212. And that is a vehicle out of asset forfeiture for the Sheriff's Department.
Any other items?
No, sir.
All right. Is our motion to approve the agenda as stipulated?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as stipulated.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, we have before us our fifth congressional congressman. Welcome, Mr. Goode. Goode, sorry. Yes. Hadn't seen you for a little while. I think Railroad Day was the last day. Yes, but we welcome you, the board welcomes you, your presence here, and hope everything is going well with you. And we'll turn the floor over to you right now. That'd be fine, there's a microphone there.
Well, it is a privilege to be with you this evening and to everyone who's here with us tonight. I live in Concord, just across the line, and grateful to be in Appomattox County. Spent a lot of time here, very frequently here, as a matter of fact, living in Concord. But I know of where you sit. I used to be a county supervisor, so you never know where that might lead you. So I had served one term on the Campbell County Board and had decided not to go any further after that. And then the next thing you know, this current journey found me. So it's great to be with you this evening. I just want you to know that on the federal level, we want to be a partner to create an environment and a climate for you to flourish at the local level. The federal government ought to be, ought not to be inhibitor to that, but ought to create an environment that's conducive to the county doing well and flourishing. And we certainly want to do that. I believe in the rising tide that lifts all boats and that we need to return to policies that reduce taxes on the federal level, that lower regulations and mandates that come out of Washington to you all, that we need to end all the emergency provisions that are in place in the name of the COVID pandemic. We have voted to do that in the House. We need to get it through the Senate to end all the mandates, all of the emergency provisions. Chief among those is all the spending that we've done over the last three years in the name of the, I call it the China virus, that's where it originated from, the COVID vaccine, the COVID pandemic, I should say. But we've had $10 trillion in new federal spending over the last two years. Never has happened, the first two years of an administration, $10 trillion in new spending. That's what has driven the massive inflation that we're suffering under and which has diminished the purchasing power. The average family is, costs about $7,000 to $8,000 a year more just to buy the essentials, gas, utilities, and groceries. And as you know, that hurts lower-income folks, senior citizens, fixed-income, middle-income Americans more than anyone else. And so that's a direct result of the inflationary spending that's gone on in Washington, trillions of dollars in new spending, which is just crushing the economy. It's also crushing retirement accounts. The average retirement account has lost about 30% in the last two years. So those nearing retirement who've been banking on their retirement accounts, again, it's about 30% below where it was two years ago. I remind folks, inflation was only 1% two years ago. And inflation is at the highest level we've seen since the Carter administration. And that's a direct result of federal spending, no question about it. Plus, we've got about 3 million less people working than were working before the pandemic. 3 million people less working because we've removed all the work requirements, all the work requirements for able-bodied Americans to get subsistence from the federal government. We've greatly expanded Medicaid, we've greatly enhanced unemployment, we've greatly expanded food stamps, we've greatly expanded housing subsistence, we've greatly expanded the child tax credit, which is a monthly check now that folks can get, all of which has contributed to about 3 million less Americans working, which is not only causing more spending and more inflation as relative to spending, but it's hurting the economy because we don't have those folks producing. There's also a cultural and a moral issue to that when you diminish the value of work or you disincentivize work. In half the states in the country, a family of four can earn about, I shouldn't say earn, I'm sorry, receive about $70,000 to $80,000 from the federal government in subsistence. So greatly diminishing the desire to work or the incentive to work in our country, which is really hurting our nation. Beyond that, you know, I'm trying to reverse the declaration on American, the declaration of war on American energy, the way we have declared war on American energy independence. And we are penalizing reliable, affordable energy. That's a direct result of the policies of this administration. And we're trying to subsidize unreliable, unaffordable energy, which is just terrible for our country and terrible for our economy and terrible for average Americans. It's really interesting to me that during the President's State of the Union address, he said that, hey, we're gonna be on fossil fuels, petroleum products for at least another 10 years. And there was laughter that broke out in the halls of, in the, in the, in the house, on the House floor there, and he didn't understand why. And he said, no, I'm serious, we're gonna need it for at least another 10 years. And what people were laughing at was, we're gonna be on fossil fuels for 100 years. We've got hundreds of years in the ground. Nothing's brought more prosperity and industry around the globe than fossil fuels. It's a wonderful thing that God put in the ground for us to harvest. And it's really hurt us that this administration has declared war on that. So we're fighting against that. I also want to just, I tell you, we're fighting to try to keep the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act in place from 2017, which lowered taxes. Sometimes you'll hear folks say, oh, we've got a deficit because of the tax cuts. The federal treasury is taking in 4.9 trillion, you could round off and say 5 trillion, into the federal treasury for the first time ever. 4.9 trillion in the last two years. Never had that much revenue coming in because of tax cuts. Again, got 3 million less people working, but we've still got $4.9 trillion more because that's been incentivized with lower taxes, I should say. If you just go back before COVID hit, we were only spending 4.4 trillion. Do the math there, we've got 4.9 trillion coming into the federal treasury. We were only spending 4.4 trillion just three years ago. Problem is, over the last three years, we've spent well over $6 trillion. Got record amount coming in, and we're spending more than we ever have. And we're trying to, I'm trying to use the debt ceiling to negotiate tax, excuse me, spending cuts. We can't keep doing what we've always done. Think of it like, you've got a member in your family or a friend who's overspending, they can't pay their debts, they can't make their monthly payments, they can't borrow anymore, they've reached the limit because they spend more than they take in. And let's say they have more income than they've ever had in their lives, but they just spend it more than they take in. And their company say, oh, what I gotta do, I gotta get my credit lines raised. No, the answer, of course, is to cut the spending. And the last thing I'll just say from an economic standpoint is how the federal government has responded has been a disaster. They've raised interest rates. Historically, if you've got a finance or an economics background, interest rates are raised to combat a really hot, strong economy to try to slow it down. Because what historically the thinking has been, if economy is really strong, really hot, then you gotta raise interest rates to slow it down so we don't have inflation. Well, we have caused inflation with the massive spending on the federal level. We don't have a real strong economy. We've had danger of a recession last year, as you know. And we've raised interest rates anyway because we've caused inflation. And what has that done to housing? What has that done to the affordability of housing for regular folks to buy? The average mortgage is about 50% more than it was a year ago. When you go from 2% or 3% interest rates to 5% or 6% interest rates, think about what that's doing. So I get asked a lot about, hey, what are you doing for the local level? What are you doing for your local economy? What are you doing for Appomattox County or Campbell County where I live? And I am the federal representative. And I understand what you all do. And I think the best thing we can do from Washington is to leave you the heck alone, stay out of the way, allow you to run your county without as many mandates and regulations and resolutions coming down to tell you what. I think it's bad enough to have Richmond tell you what doing Appomattox County. It's even worse to have Washington do that. And so I'm certainly opposed to that. And I jokingly say sometimes, if I had a bill to bring a billion dollars to Appomattox County in Congress, I had the bill to bring a billion dollars to Appomattox County. Now Susan, we might get excited about that billion dollars. But out of 435 members of Congress, Susan, how many you think would be in favor of a billion dollars for Appomattox County? Out of 435, might be just one. So how would I be able to get the other 434 to vote for my billion dollars? What do I have to vote for? Their $435 billion for their 435 projects. But I've got 24 cities and counties in the 5th District, as Mr. Carter was representing the 5th District. And so I, you know, you think that Cumberland County or Buckingham County or, or, you know, Amherst County might want their billion. And that's how we get to one, excuse me, $32 trillion in national debt. Do you know that we owe about $100,000 per citizen in national debt right now? We're borrowing, I did a radio interview today, we're borrowing money to send it to Ukraine. Wherever you stand on the Ukraine war, we have sent $113 billion in the last year to Ukraine. That equates to about $260 million per congressional district, 260 million. I'll bet you if we had the, roughly, there's about 400,000 voters in the 5th congressional district. If we surveyed the 400,000 voters and said, do you want to send 260 million from you to Ukraine? Do you want to borrow, borrow $260 million from the citizens of 5th District and send it to Ukraine? Or would you rather not add that to the national debt? Or would you rather, if you're gonna borrow it, invest it or spend it in the 5th District? I think you might get a different decision than the 113 billion we have borrowed to send to Ukraine. And forgive me for the last thing that I'll just say, as far as energy. And we just had a Senate hearing in Washington with the administration about what they're doing on the so-called envi, the climate war, the climate war. And it was asked of these members of administration how much they thought it would cost to make United States carbon neutral. How much would it cost? Did anybody see that, see how much they said it would cost? $50 trillion, $50 trillion. Our national debt right now is 32 trillion. $50 trillion is $150,000 each, $150,000 each. And then it was asked, well, how much would that lower the, the average temperature? They said, we don't know. They said, we don't know. Well, what if we do that? We spend the $50 trillion, $150,000 per citizen, but China and India don't do anything. How much would it, difference would it make? Well, we gotta try to get them to do it, they said. But what if they don't do it? How much difference? They don't know. And yet, they're trying to force that upon us. So I can tell you, that's one of the many things that I'm fighting against in Washington. I don't know how much time you wanted me to take, or how much, probably more than you wanted me to, Chairman, or what you wanted, if y'all had any questions for me. But be glad to take any questions, or just go ahead and take a seat. I'm looking forward to, by the way, touring the Votec Center. We're gonna do that, I guess, after the meeting here tonight. And, you know, I do, I will say that there seems to be bipartisan recognition and widespread recognition of the need to invest in our trades and skilled workers. And frankly, the, I have a great, I now chair the Subcommittee on Health, Employment, Labor, and Pensions in the Education and Workforce Committee, and have tremendous concern about the federal subsidization of the exploding college costs. I don't think the answer is to do as the President wants to do, which is to transfer the student loan debt to people who didn't borrow it, which I think is immoral, but I don't, and I don't think that's the answer to it. And by the way, another thing we're doing, we gotta stop, is we're suspending payments on student loans. There's another incentive not to work. If you're being, if you don't have to pay your student loans, you have an incentive not to work or a disincentive to work. And that's costing taxpayers about $5, $6 billion a month. It's costing about $200 billion just to not have folks make payments on student loans. Not to mention the President's determination to try to somehow transfer that loan debt. Don't let anybody ever say forgive or cancel it. Transfer that to those who did not borrow it. Mr. Chairman, I yield back to you.
Okay, thank you. Floor is open for any questions for our Congressman.
Thank you, guys, great to be with you all tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. It is, it is a privilege. And to be a little bit political, 79% I got from Appomattox County, so I'm thrilled to be in Appomattox County. The only one that beat my home county, Campbell County, in the last election was Appomattox County. It's always great to be in Appomattox, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Question I had, really, was the Chamber of Commerce. I was really in a state of shock in hearing that there are no more monetary funds to run them past May or June.
Mr. Chairman, may I say a word on that?
Oh, no, no. Thank you. But I was in a state of shock in that regard. I did see the past president at our local Lions Club meeting and asked him just for a question on it. And he said yes. And like I say, I just hope our local businesses and all start joining and making this thing more of a reality and be proactive instead of reactive. That's all I had on that. Any others? Okay, how about you, Ms. Adams?
No, sir, I would just encourage board members to contact staff if you have additional questions. But you know the environment of right now and what we're working with with the revenue situation. So we'll see what happens.
Okay, next is our citizen public comment period. This time is provided by the Board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the Board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the Board for more than three minutes. Anyone sign up back a ace? Thank you. Is it, who? I don't know. Is anyone that like to address the Board who failed to sign up? Mr. Boyer? Yeah, is on the same subject matter as the last meeting?
Yes, sir, but there's a change.
A change?
In my condition.
Okay, come on up with it. We are very friendly Board.
My name is Steve Boyer, I reside at 2247 Double Bridges Road in Spout Spring. And since I met with you all last time, we did get a $3,000 royalty check from our ad magazine. So I just want to let you know that we are, we will squeak through June at this point.
Okay, beautiful.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for sharing that information. Is anyone else like to address the Board who failed to sign up? Okay, moving right along. On our appearances, we have Mr. Taylor Stover, CPA, Robison, Palmer, Cox Associates. Welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name's Taylor Stover, I'm a partner out of the Richmond office for RFC. Aaron Hawkins is a partner in charge for this audit. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight due to some family obligations, so he sent me in his place. He sends his regards on that. I'm gonna touch on a few highlights on the report. I'm not gonna really dig through it, make you guys flip through the report. I'm just gonna touch a few things here that might be important to you all. We issued three opinions on your report. We issued one on the financial statements, one on your internal controls, and another one on your federal compliance. All three opinions are what we call an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It's the highest opinion you can receive. We had no management letter comments, and we didn't, we didn't have any, no compliance, we didn't have any compliance findings, pardon me. Some changes this year, we had a new accounting standard that came out as GASB 87 and dealt with leases. So now operating leases are no longer off the balance sheet, they're now included in your financial statements. It basically had very little impact to the county due to the assets and liability kind of offsetting each other. So really, not much change in your statements there. Exhibit one, which is your full accrual statement, it's your government-wide statement there, just kind of show everything, it's gonna include your capital assets and debt and everything in there that you don't see in the fund statements. You had 14.5 million of unrestricted net position. That makes up 68% of the total net position that you guys have, so that's a really good place to be. On exhibit three, which is your fund balance statements, that's kind of what you guys use for your budgeting purposes. You had $21 million in unassigned fund balance. That is, that percentage is above the minimum amount recommended, so you guys are doing great there. Your tax collection percentage for the year was 98.32%, which is doing a fantastic job for the Treasurer's Office collecting your revenues there. Dealing with the ARPA fund, excuse me, the ARPA funds that you guys received, you all still have about $3 million sitting there that you guys hadn't spent as of 6/2022. That is not included in the unassigned fund balance I was including earlier because there is a liability shown on the balance sheet there. So they kind of nets each other out. So to summarize what I just kind of covered, basically, the county's in great shape financially. All your net position fund balances are good figures right there. Last but not least, again, if you have, do you have any questions on the report? I know you guys haven't had it long, we kind of, we had to issue a little late due to kind of getting one little document back a little late, but we had a quick turnaround, finalized it for you guys today and everything so we could present it. Well, with that, I just want to thank the county administration, finance staff, the treasurer, the commissioner's office, school board, and the, and social services, of course. So if you all don't have any questions, I'm gonna go ahead and depart for the day.
Any questions, any member?
And if anything comes up later, just feel free to contact us, shoot us an email, something like that, more than happy to explain anything if you have any questions.
To me, this all sounds peaches and cream.
That's exactly what I was trying to get at. All right, thank you all, have a very good day.
Thank you, you too. Next, we have Ms. Melissa Lucy, CEO, Horizon Behavioral Health. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, how are you all doing tonight?
Wonderful.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Well, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about Horizon and what we're doing and what we're doing for the residents of Appomattox County. And I'm gonna try to be as efficient and as quick as possible because I know that's what I like in my board meetings, so I'm sure you all are the same. So that being said, I'm gonna start with our vision. And I will tell you, there's a packing in front of you. And so the PowerPoint's what I'm gonna be speaking to right now. But there's some other handouts that I will leave with you all. If you have questions, please reach out to me, my business card is in there as well. So our vision is...
So the next page is our estate programs. And this demonstrates the wide range of estate programming that a lot of you have. Not only does this help individuals serve, it also makes it possible for a lot of them to apply for large grants, can grant, and other brands. And that includes options that we can place in those grants and makes it possible to...
And that is outcomes that we can place in those grants and makes it possible to enable Horizon services to individuals who might not otherwise be able to access them. On the next page, at Horizon, we not only provide treatment, we provide prevention services to prevent individual community improvements. Horizon has one of the best recognized prevention programs in the state of Virginia, and these are some of the key initiatives that Horizon has accomplished throughout the customer area and our prevention. The next page uses some of the outcomes Horizon is proud to report on. The visitors to the White are new locations for Horizon. And so I wanted to point those out because residents of Appomattox County can also access their services in this center. And one of the things that we now have is a private care program, which is specific for ladies who have children who are also experiencing substance abuse issues. There's a whole comprehensive program about childcare as well as the treatment of services that are in the community, which allows them to actually access services. And you can see we've been very busy providing services and continue to offer a telehealth and in-person appointments because we want to make it easy for individuals to receive services where they are at. We do still have some individuals that do not come back into the center, and so whenever we can make it possible, we do for them to access the telehealth services. There are some services that will require them at some point to come in. For example, seeing a psychiatrist, at some point, we have to get vials, we have to get weights to make sure the medications that are on are not effective when they're in the room. So the law requirement of sending them in and then on the floor. And those of your choice, when we give you these are six hundred and eighty-seven Appomattox residents, and I want to take that out for everyone. The next page are additional outcomes that I want to bring to your attention. And additionally, I want to point out one hundred percent of the individuals who are coming to the state hospital are scheduled to follow appointments with Horizon prior hospital visits. Why is that important? That's important because we're being the individual, the members that get out of the hospital and therefore ensuring that they remain insured and are in age and are pretty healthy, so remember them, survive, and relax, or hospital control. On the next page, you can see our basic consumer satisfaction survey indicates that ninety-five percent of consumers surveyed felt they had made progress with issues of longevity care, and ninety-four percent were satisfied with the services that they received from Horizon. The next page is additional outcomes Horizon is proud to report on. I'm not going to read each outcome because it will take you a while on all that information. But again, if you review them, if you have questions, or if you want to know more information about them. The next page, you can see clinical admissionists in Appomattox that Horizon is actively engaged in and offers to the residents of Appomattox County. And then the next page, earlier I talked about some of the grants that we have went out for, we receive specific grants... Say, we receive specific grants that are available to Appomattox County residents as well. The first one is permanent for housing, also called TFA, so it's two hundred and thousand dollars in startup funding for individuals with mental illness to secure and maintain affordable housing. And we also help to do treatment services for the individuals to secure... The next one is the grant that has been more conditional, and this is a grant that supports the individuals with substance treatment, housing services, and other critical services for the individual and their families, and including terminal treatment. Last but not least, is our crisis proceeding center, and that is with on the horizon, and that's probably what everybody keeps asking me about, and I just want to be there. So Horizon is actively looking for a location, so we now are also in the CEO position for the crisis proceeding center. And that crisis proceeding center, we have BTOC, crisis for legal services, twenty-three hour observation, which is a new service which will allow us more time to evaluate emergency custody orders, which are recuperative patient orders, which without law enforcement involved. So in there, we have... Like, also the officer, they can also be auxiliary officers, and a marshal with the locality on that piece to ensure that expert and law enforcement is calling them to get the table, and help them decide who will be there to fill that role. Those individuals will take custody of emergency custody orders and will hold them by we provide even first person guidance. That's about eighteen months. I think we're the next one. I asked it, but I can kind of see you will go in and learn. So that is the project I want to work through with that gentleman. The sort of thing is you have to...
I got one. Going back to evidence-based programs. What is Lions Quest? Positive Life Skill? What is...
Oh, so it's teaching individuals how positive life skills, just what it says, teaching them how to positively interact with you, how to positively interact with me, how to positively behave if they're at work, or if they're in classrooms, or kids are getting on what AICs were talking about. Basically, life skills. So when they're growing up, your parents are teaching you how to behave, what's, you know, proper etiquette, what's expected in society, what's not expected in society, but teaching them positive skills and how to interact.
See, at life, that caught my attention. I am alive.
Yeah. Is that what it is? It's a little bit different, uh... Different line there, but yeah. Probably along the same lines as some of that.
Thank you.
That's true.
Mr. Hope?
You mentioned, in addition to the crisis proceedings, which eighteen months can get here faster than... You mentioned some other methods you guys are looking at to try to decrease the amount of ECOs and TDOs. Just touch on that a little?
So our crisis intervention program, we can see individuals, they come in, we do a screening, we determine that they don't quite meet hospitalization criteria, but you can find a service for them in the community, and therefore we can possibly maintain them there. We will try to, and maybe we meet with them every day for fifteen minutes, and maybe we don't meet with them every day for five hours. But those are services that we can put in place. We do have to have an actual plan of what we're going to do, depending on the individual or the dependents who attend a hospital, so we can... And it's very individualized to each individual. Typically, we see more kids than adults who opt for that direction, but anytime we can have resource, we're going to do that. So anytime we can find something in the community to maintain, and that's what it's trying to do for multiple reasons. It's not always the best thing for individuals to go to the hospital. The women from the loved ones are taken out of the community, or the support group is not there anymore, and quite frequently, sometimes they are negative, they hate each other.
Reverend General?
Thank you. Do you receive part of your budget from the federal government?
We receive some such... I mean, from the federal government, but I'm very thoughtful about it. It's a federal estate fund. So it's going to be a speedway. So we provide services, we get reimbursed for the services, nothing to demonstrate. We provide them stories and...
Another question?
I like this. You have a lot to bring.
Y'all see, it's five o'clock in the morning.
Oh, does that matter?
We certainly appreciate you coming.
You're very welcome.
And explaining this, we know that you all provide very essential services. Thank you, brother. You reside in Lynchburg?
I actually reside in Dunkirk.
Well, you will have a safe trip back.
Thank you.
Yeah, play.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Y'all are wonderful.
Next, we have Mrs. Ashley Samma. She's not here. She couldn't make it tonight, so we'll bypass her, and we'll already have heard it from our congressman. So we will go to number six. So next, we go have a public hearing amendments to transit occupancy tax. Ask. A duly advertised public hearing that is scheduled by the county's general super classes to receive comments and consider proposed amendments to the county's general chapter three, which is administrative article seven taxation deed, division eighteen transit occupancy tax. The proposal amendments on the county code three point seven dash fifty-five approved three point seven sixty-two. Current language will be deleted and new code later. We adopted a mandate in January, known as accommodation in a... Such as... R B and D, Ibro, the... BRBO, the head of that, responsible for collective paying the tax. The amount of the tax will not change. I'll read that again. The amount of the tax will not change. Only collection of responsibilities will be modified. Next, any questions?
Yeah, the only thing we're changing, Chairman, currently, the individual people renting R B and Ds or Ibro houses are responsible for reporting and the tax. The state law changed this statute to allow us to collect straight from the intermediary, the ones that organize and manage the property, so we'll take the burden of collecting the tax, pass it off to the property owners, which should be agency handling. So but the act will need to say, there's no increase or decrease in the tax itself.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on the subject? Hearing none, then. Listen for words, please, on adoption of amendment to county code chapter three, administration article seven taxation deed, division eighteen transit occupancy tax, three point seven dash fifty-five approved three point seven sixty-two. Any discussion of amendment program? The down load.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amendments as written out for the county code.
Is that a second? Do you have a second? Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. We will roll call vote? Okay. We will enter to a roll call vote, Mr. Hills. Reverend General?
Aye.
Oh, also. Okay, town of Appomattox requests for waiver on building permit fee. The town of Appomattox has requested the board's consideration to waive the building permit fee for construction activities at two fourteen Main Street, Appomattox, Virginia, which this is talking about, the train depot. Terry McGee, town manager, is present to address any questions which we may have. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Just wondering, if you had an estimated price on what I had initially provided you in the actual price, six hundred and forty thousand three hundred and twenty-nine. That's the only change.
You said, do you mind repeating that?
Six hundred and forty thousand three hundred and eighty-nine.
Well, I must say this, damn man. And I say this as a great thing. I really do instill in hands, still hands in downtown merchants. And this is something we've been beating. And I have nothing but good things to say about it, and wish it much success.
Thank you very much. We are very... I was looking really forward to getting rolling. The... The longest pole in this industry is getting enough slate to do it right.
Right. Any other questions?
Guys are doing a great job as is the group, but they're trying to utilize as much of the first light so that when it puts up, there won't be an odd book in the box. There is some good in that.
Any... Any questions? Well, damn man. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
Good luck. Next, we have Mrs. Patricia Lloyd, Red Straw, MOUs for polling places. Okay, gentlemen. Is there a motion to consider the waiver of the building permit for construction at train depot, town of Appomattox?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the building permit fee for the construction of the train depot in town.
Is that a second? Out of second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a figure on exactly what the building net fees would have been if we talked about?
Other question? Roll call vote, Mr. Hills. Reverend General?
Aye. Aye. Oh, aye.
Also. Name. Part of the... I'll tell you all the way.
Um, I would like to introduce Robert C. Rensel. He is a member of our board, and he will play share. And he put together a little email that I handed out a few years earlier that discusses the different points unlocked regarding what responsibilities that forelord has, towards the board. I'm glad to meet you all, and I'm sure we'll know each other in the next few years. I've been asked to discuss a new issue about the memorandum of understanding of polling places. And as you all know, we, as members of the board, are bound by the Virginia election code and by the state board elections and their regulations, which have the intent to walk. Under twenty-four point two dash one oh six of the code and section one point two of the regulation, the state board elections say that the board members and the registrar are responsible for, quote, virtually all aspects of voter registration and the election administration. And under the regulation, regulation three point three point two, we also have the responsibility to meet with the operators of these polling places. And when we meet with the operators of these polling places, it is us that can get to them what they require and to us what he requires. We have to get an understanding. And because of that understanding that we have to have, it's not logical that it's within our purview that we prepare and we memorize the understanding. There's another problem, and that is because the elections code, as you all know, has changed constantly, especially in the past few years. We now have polling places that have two of them, not only polling places, but they're also registration sites. The same day registered, and that's followed in that they put a rank in the... In the MOUs. Under two point five point three of the legislation, it says that what to approve must, quote, must approve, any agreements upon going registration sites. And since the polling places are also registration sites, it goes nowhere unless we approve of it. So it seems that we have to sign off on the registration site, and we have to sign off on the members of understanding. So it's only logical that we have to do it. I think the most important regulation I have seen is three point three point two, when it says we all have to have a good working relationship with the board of super, with the governor's body, and that is the most important. We don't want a good relationship with the board of super, because we want a great relationship with the board of super. We want to flock it in any way we can, and I'm sure you do as well with us. Help us, and we help you. All we want is good, clean, fair election, and it goes smoothly as possible, and that we have no... All we want is good, clean, fair election and go smoothly as possible and that we have no problem. That's all we care about. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman. So I guess, uh, my only question is. If the MOUs right now as presented are with us, are you saying that you would rather them be with you? What if, I don't think I'm sure what you're saying, what you want.
Yes, going forward. Um, so what I suggested to, to last week was add to the charter now is that, um, because we had done these last year the way the ones were done in two thousand fourteen, due to the board supervisor assigned it, um, and it's taken far too long. But I suggest that we leave these alone and have a board supervisor them assign them, and then our board will have to assign the O U.
So you want us to adopt these, is what you're asking?
Yes, yes. Um, and they are identical to the two you've already adopted, not two, twofold, like you said, Dr. Bryant and Chris Tanner. Um, so we want to adopt those, then they are, uh, our board will sign it in addition. And going forward, if we need to write on the new location, then we will have our board sign it.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I understand that the board has, as it's been presented, approval authority after approval to say. And I got no problem with them approving, yes, this is a site, this is what you want. But when it comes to signing the MOU, my understanding is the electoral board has no authority to obligate money or pay funds. And we're the ones that are paying for these polling places. And so I think that's, in my way of thinking, we should be the ones out of line with the MOU. But I have no problem with them signing after or in addition.
Our memorandum of understanding of this, what you need to provide for us, what you need to provide for me. That's what the memorandum of understanding is.
So you're not saying rates for use or anything like that?
No, we do have, we do have a donation in there. Yes, we do. It's three hundred dollars, it's three hundred dollars, so on, on the, so, yeah, that is it now.
Now, if anything changes, then scope. Anything changes, fine, maybe, or maybe it's a, that you all will be back with us. We have to, and if it's harder than it is, it could be done.
Right now, it is our agreement, and what we're going to discuss is, do you want, if you do, it is our agreement, which is perfectly acceptable to me. Um, but it's settled, obviously, our board approved it prior to bringing it, bringing it after as well. We just didn't have our board approve it in writing, and Mr. Hill and I will now send it to you to review.
Ms. Allen.
I'm, I'm just a little bit, excuse me, I'm a little bit confused by the piece of paper. So I was reading along and I may not have totally understood everything you were saying, but for clarification going forward, it does say adoption, not ordinance? If the polling place changes?
Yes, and that's under the, under the, uh, uh.
Okay.
That definitely falls on the board.
Okay, that's, just wanted clarification on that, thank you.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that there's not an MOU for this polling precinct, is that because we own it?
Correct.
We own the MOU, I said.
Correct.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Same with, same with the other one, under eight events. So right now, both of the, the, the county, the, the, we don't.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you all.
Well, we want to know which way you do need to vote, I'm a pretty sure.
Oh, we are, we are. I just wanted to thank you first, I meant to hear and vote the vote. Now, gentlemen, you heard from the electoral, uh, Red Straw and the vice, vice chairman, and with the written document, uh, end of discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, uh, the four memorandum of understanding as presented.
Is that a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just one point of clarification, all we're approving right now is the memorandum as it is, not approving any official actions. Future actions.
Any additional questions? We have a roll call vote, Mr. Hill. Reverend General.
Aye. Aye.
You assume that you get that for a time?
Yeah.
You want to address the other point, or are you?
Uh.
Sure, no, I mean, for going forward, moving on the, on the understanding, yeah, but we certainly are, are all concerned about, we certainly, uh, the electoral board, the people of the, of, of, of.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think I would agree with that. My concern would be if something happened with the polling, I should, I should come back to the board. Citizens say, well, I think it would be a point at the electoral board. The citizen board doesn't, even though it's very much, well, very much.
Unfortunately, it's, yeah.
I think the governing body would be the ones that would be taking the key to that.
Is that? Any other discussion?
Mr. Carter, I think also it would be filed with our official records. That way, rear, if all of us are gone and someone needs to reference it, at least it is recorded in the official documentation.
I should know.
I should know, because I have what we know, and then we have to be sort of like registrar, registrar in the public place of the election.
I, I, yeah, I don't dispute that, I, I think there's a, you know, unfortunate, perhaps, the, the, the way I'm saying, if this is general, you know, I'm, 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 I'm a lot of people that, you know, maybe, when they enter to the election, and there's their own problems, don't realize the correct are, you know, what they do, like, you know, like what.
I can send them back, and tell them about passports, dog, etc., etc.
Mr. Chairman, is that something we actually need to decide tonight? We just approved these four, and we won't, and it, it won't come up unless these polling precincts change, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. Thank you all. Oh, yes. Is there a motion?
Thank you.
We'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hill, Reverend Johnson, Mr. Hugel, Mr. Hart. What's that?
Still a.
All right.
So, you met myself, uh, last time, and just here to formalize, moving the spout spring, all of, uh, who put it on, and put it on? Ace, if you could put up an apple.
I'll give to the ongoing operations to approve, um, their activities, they have asked if we move a polling place to the same site, uh, from the existing building to the new building, uh, which we did under a temporary approval from ULEC last year, uh, but, um, that worked out very well to lead, uh, the poll workers as well as the voters, that we, uh, some interviews while we were there, we asked, uh, you know, how did that work out, it worked fine. Uh, in fact, it's a better facility to, to lead. So, if we're going to, uh, to move that permanently, it's actually, it's taken a little time, so, uh, we were, uh, fortunate to have the, uh, that that be done, the, uh, county attorney looked at it and, you know, recommended that we, we believe that it's, it's not simply a correction, but you may to stretch that, you know, to the process, to, to, uh, make sure that we do, uh, there's no obstacle to voting, and maybe you're surprised by it, uh, when you, uh, get lost, uh, we, uh, think that it's, uh, pretty simple, straightforward, and, and official move, uh, we need to start the process.
Reverend Johnson, uh, one of the things that was not in the original discussion, but, uh, still, last week and I, uh, went back and forth and figured it out, people who have helped me, uh, is that we do need to notify the voters again, unfortunately. Do you know we notified them last year, and the carding are all coming out with the new drafts, that we need, you will be notified again, and so, people know that, so you really can vote. Just so you know, that will be in suspense for, for 400 of the voters. It's not even more than suspense, but it's a statement.
A comment, Mr. Hill?
Will this new facility have an amnesty box for dropping off donuts or fruit trays?
That is no longer allowed at all. So, our poll workers are not allowed to get, have people bring in cookies and things anywhere, at the gate last year.
Go on, Mr. Hill. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I just have one, I just want to make sure. The, the MOU we just approved is for the new location in the, correct? We don't have to come back to another MOU now, do we?
It is not, I don't know whether we can amend the address on that, but it is, thank you.
If, if the owners agree with the many addresses.
Okay, yeah, so I don't think there will be any problem with that, since they asked us to do this. Uh, just in case you're not aware, you probably already know this, um, the reason they wanted to move is to interfere with bingo, and their bingo, well, this is serious stuff at night, it's, their bingo brings in a half of the 1,500 a night, which is money that goes to help college tech and other good things to the county. I was an age that was that high. There's some serious bingo players, and they come from all over the area. We can keep that money coming into the county, we're happy to move.
I don't know what the county would do if that could be moved, though. All right. Any other questions, concerns? Any other vote?
Just, if everybody's on their head, I'll wrap up the ordinance, this is every ordinance for the, for the rest of the P S, I'll give you the ordinance.
All right. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, amendment to the Office of Billings Section, Enforcement of State, Billings Code ordinance. Any comments, concerns on this?
You know, this is, uh, building official came to me, uh, a few weeks ago, we realized tiny houses, and, uh, we're starting to see more of those, it's actually, that's what that, and these two represented, so, so, building official asked for the graphics language, and moved them to, 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 then we realized we were representing to that, and, and, so this is just, uh, to, to, to current state, and, and.
Is there a motion, uh, to schedule a public hearing for March 20?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Sir.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is resolution approving the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Tifa, Alabot, Wal-Mart, Walgreens, and C D S. Any questions regarding here? Would you like to?
This is quickly, as, as, I remember, we've done this, um, the, uh, state attorney general law's corrupt appeal for, splitting, so people, and, and, uh, we just, we would participate in, we have to ask if we figure out, and a new settlement agreement would be very, very, so we have part of that money, and, and, to, 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 to,
Any questions for Mr. Latchman? If not, is there a motion to consider adoption of the attached resolution approving the county's participation in proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Tifa, Alabot, Wal-Mart, Walgreens, C D S? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is consent agenda, includes approval of all bills, minutes, supplemental corporations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda of the request of any boarder prior to the vote of the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually, in order which they will remove from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. Is it any questions, issues, or concerns concerning, uh, consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I think.
Yes, sir.
Uh, line item 13, the, uh, commission of revenue refund request, the second one, it's just a larger number than I'm used to seeing, from a, from the description, is this, are these road tractors, is that what this is? Does anybody know? It's just a lot higher than normal personal property taxes for a standard passenger vehicle, that's why I was, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think it's right.
That's a lot of money. What was you gonna say, Mr. Coleman? Page is that up? Any additional discussion? Now, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception to sheriff's call of 3,000, 37,212 dollars? Yeah, we can't, can't. Is there a motion to approve?
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is that second, okay. Additional discussion? We have a roll call vote, Mr. Hill, Reverend Johnson.
Aye. Aye.
Also, roll down. Mr. Latchman? Is it that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I put before you the county administrator's report, which includes the county departments, and, um, if there are questions, I'll entertain those now, or if you decide later, just send me an email.
I guess, uh, is there anything that really stands out? Would we need to go right away?
Um, no, we've got a lot of projects in, in process, um, we're doing the employee salary study, which I think the departments are excited to hear about that, and that's what the board authorized. Um, we're looking at cyber security issues, the, the county is, um, being faced with, um, a new telephone system, so we're looking at options for voice over IP. We did meet with, Ms. McCormick and I met with Mr. Gillespie, and the, um, school construction project is going to be closed out the end of this month. We finalized all the invoices, and you may have one more, I think, to pay at the March meeting, two more, that he indicated. And so, our responsibility will be, we would have been relieved of any more responsibility beyond that. A lot going on with the VOTEC Center, a lot of interest with that, we've been meeting with workforce development groups, and Central Virginia Community College is in the process of formulating an MOU with ACA, so that any students that enter into the VOTEC Center program will receive their certification or degree from C D C C. And, of course, we've been working on budget.
Any questions for our county administrator? Thank you for your report. Next, we have a portion of informational items, which encompasses a school financial board, like a line screen, any questions on those two items? Now, oh, excuse me, Mr. Hope.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to go back to the consent agenda for a second. We voted to move the money for the sheriff's office vehicle from the asset forfeiture fund to the general fund. Do we now need a motion to pay for it from the general fund?
I think he meant to include that, but you may.
I thought I said.
Hey, you amended, you, your amendment was, Senator. So, you prefer amendment to approve it.
Okay, as long as we got it covered, okay, right, that's fine.
Thirty-seven, twenty.
To pay for it, yeah.
Next is supervising concerns, Mr. Hill.
Um, no, no concerns, in general, uh, no, no, you know, um, just, you know, uh, just the ground, I'm getting candid, sitting through my decisions, and, 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 meeting, re-meeting people, and, um, it's really shocking how much changed in four years, and how people have moved, um, you know, good things, sad things, in a way, it's, um, it's a pleasure to, um, to, to.
Good to hear. Reverend Johnson? Mr. Hill?
I'd like to, you know, second what Mr. Hill said about hitting the street and meeting these people again, and finding that there's people that, uh, you thought were there, were no longer there anymore. Other than that, my concern is, I think we need to, uh, remind the town that we sent them a request regarding the, they're taking over the water line, and they haven't responded. Their response was, wait till the city manager got here, and the city manager's been on the job quite a while now, so I think we need to, uh, readjust the town about the water line.
Thank you, you, exactly right. Mr. Hope?
I mean, nothing to my, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I got, uh, say, one thing, I believe, I got, uh, Jeff reminded me of, we had a social service meeting this morning, and they have, I think Jeff has already worked on this problem some time back, but now it's a reoccurring situation where it is, uh, moisture, whatever is getting into the social services, uh, departments, and they would like to, they're gonna send a, where you go, work, work on it, oh, but I told them, I was, we have a meeting tonight, and I was gonna, they, no. Um, other than that, other than that, listen.
Mr. Carter, I have one last comment.
Excuse me, yes, ma'am.
If I may.
Please.
Um, Mr. Hill and I spoke this morning, and he mentioned about the water line as a reminder to reach out to the town, so I did send that email today.
All right. Oh, I, that reminds me, one more thing, and I talked to Mr. Roy, but, yes, as I got hit with it last Saturday, then at the, when the last Saturday, then at the debate, uh, in regards to broadband up on 460 West, uh, it stopped, apparently just right short of, uh, who did Stowe Frank's, and I asked him, when would it probably be picked back up, so I could pass that information on? Right now, the best guess, subject to change anytime, is one year to two years. Am I still correct on that? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I did forget one thing.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ring to the board's attention and to the citizens, I know that the Dominion is hanging fiber on their lines now, uh, on the eastern end of the county, um, and I talked to one of the project managers yesterday, and, um, this is a part of the eventual Firefly, um, project, where, uh, where they're gonna tap into those lines and get them to the, um, county residence, and the last time I checked, I think, uh, this summer, they are planning on Dominion customers in Athletics County having hookups, uh, to fiber, fiber wireless at home, having that availability, uh, so, I've, I've got lots of people that email me and ask me questions about getting, you know, internet at, uh, at their homes, and if your own Dominion is coming, if you're on South Side, um, it's also coming, but it's gonna be longer, uh, but I think by this time next year, the plan is for South Side customers to be getting that, but there is a plan to get every home in Athletics County access to fiber broadband.
Mr. Hill?
Well, Mr. Hogan mentioned Dominion, and that brought, reminded me of an interesting thing, one of the citizens I visited with us last weekend said that they have been getting letters from Dominion, now they're on South Side, they've been getting letters from Dominion about water and sewer hookup and electricity, and I just, that just didn't sound right to me, that sounded more like a scam, but I haven't got over to the sheriff to ask him if he'd or anything on it yet.
Okay. Nice to see our treasurer of the county here tonight, and, uh, upon saying that, excuse me, the mayor of Hamplin, nice to see you all. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Chairman, I move we rise.